About three hundred and forty-five plan views. Those include anything from simple solar plans all the way up to nature projects. They did notice nine people for leads and responded twenty-eight complaints that they had over different things. In absence of the fire safety presentations, we did embrace social media and posted the information on our websites and also sent it out via Instagram to make sure that people still had the information in time of year. Next slide, please. So going over some of the department programs, we have training, peer support, CIRP, which is Community Emergency Response Team. We have a reserve program and we also have an explorer program. For training, our training department ensures that our crews receive two hundred and forty hours each per year and that they also receive their mandated trainings in hazmat, wildland, fire safety, and other required trainings. We also have a very robust succession training program with task books for people to promote up to engineer, captain, and chief officer level. We have a peer support program that consists of volunteers. They go to specialty training to support each other in times of crisis, whether it be personal or at work. This is a part of a regional program throughout the county that we all share when someone has a serious incident in their department. San Diego Fire Department is recently out of death and we send people there to help them out with their process. We also have a department chaplain that helps out with that process as well. Our community emergency response team, we actually, our emergency preparedness coordinator, Andy McKeller, is the coordinator for East County CIRP and he makes sure that they get all the proper training, puts on their academies with the assistance of the fire crews. And this year, last year in 2021, they assisted with a lot of the vaccination and testing sites by helping with some admin duties and directing traffic. One of the challenges that we're facing in the fire service right now is recruitment. And so utilizing our explorers and our reserves, we reach out on our explorer program to, through the Boy Scouts, we reach out to people that are fifteen to twenty-one years of age, try to get them interested in the fire service, get them signed up as an explorer. Currently, we have about twelve to thirteen explorers with another twenty on the waiting list. And so we get these young people into the fire station, teach them what the fire service is about, try to get their interest in it, try to support them with training, education, and continuing on. And we've developed a pathway into our reserve program. The reserve program, we actually just brought on nine new reserves. And most of these reserves, when we get them on, give them some fire training, they get to paramedic school. We've hired a lot of these down the road, so it really pays off. It's kind of like a farm team and we have a transition from the explorers to the reserves. This helps us with the diversity within our organization and allows members of the community to actually participate in the fire department. So they're really kind of helping out. It'll pay dividends a few years down the road with our recruitment, getting people to be able to go to school and join the department. Next slide. So that completes my report and if anybody has any questions, they do have me to answer.
Who maintains the fire hydrants?
Excuse me.
Oh, he just asked if we had any questions.
He's asking me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've been to one of these meetings since I got beat up by the city council many years ago and it downzoned my forty-four-year-old apartment building. It cost me millions of dollars.
Any questions from the council?
I'll take up the resident's question, I believe it was. Who maintains the fire hydrants? Who maintains the fire hydrants?
The water department.
That's a Helix, Hitting Helix Water Authority.
So who tells Helix to maintain them? Well, okay, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have come to the meeting.
No, it's not, it's not bad. There's a place where the public comment, okay, so. The public comment is coming up. If you have those questions, you can ask them and we'll get you the answers to it. As long as he asks it, go ahead and answer the question if you would.
So the water district maintains the infrastructure and the water system in the city and they have a regular maintenance program that they perform annually. If they're missing out on a hydrant or they, you see one that's leaking, you can always call the district office and let them know that they have an issue and they'll come out and check it.
Do you have any more questions, Councilmember Barinson, since you jumped in here?
No, thank you for asking, Mayor Portman Jones, but thank you for the presentation.
Anyone else?
No questions, just thanks for the presentation and I think we'll be discussing some fire department issues a little later on this evening, so you might want to stick around. Just give an opinion on that. Thank you.
Mr. Gastel, anything for you?
No, no, thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Chief, I'm just, I'm glad you mentioned the recruitment issue. It's a problem, I saw an article on law enforcement this week, I think it was in the Tribune talking about that. I was just done in Washington for my uncle's funeral. My brother is a retired sheriff in the police department at Edmonds and he was talking about the difficulty they're having there. So it's not just, you know, it's not just here, it's all over. At least we're making some steps to try and.
So is, how, can you further review?
May I, Portman Jones? Actually, could I take up my second question?
Sure.
Let's see, could you explain the relationship between the fire department and our EMT services? Perhaps that's something that the public would find very helpful. How does that work?
So the fire department, all these, just like these gentlemen standing in the back, all of our personnel are medically trained, at least to the level of EMT. Majority of them now, as a matter of fact, a hundred percent, which is a vast majority, are all certified EMTPs, which means that they're paramedics. And so as first responders, a lot of times the fire engine is there much quicker than an ambulance would be. So they're able to come out and start providing advanced life support care if needed. Or if something is minor, they can sometimes encourage people to take care of themselves, get themselves to the doctor or hospital, and then they can cancel an ambulance. So that's, that's what that program is.
I think maybe I should make the question a little bit more pointed, but it was kind of wanting to know, how does that, how does it happen to when someone calls, they're in distress, an engine goes out and then an ambulance, because we contract with AMR, correct? And then an ambulance will go out at the same time? How does that relationship work to where a fire truck, which already has paramedics in it, and then the AMR truck or box, as you guys talk, goes out at the same time? How does that work?
So we don't transport, we don't contract with AMR. AMR provides service to the city, but it's not through a city contract.
Okay.
And so every time, like I said, they're first responders. So when a nine-one-one call comes in and they send out, depending on the determinant code that the dispatch triages it to, will determine the level of what response is required. So sometimes there's no engine that goes with it and the ambulance just goes by itself. Or if it's determined to be, potentially have more serious implications, the engine company is dispatched with those paramedics on it, because they'll get there first and they can start providing care until the ambulance gets there. The ambulance transports patients, the engine company does not.
Okay, thank you.
Just for clarification, to add on to that, is that AMR actually contracts with the hospital district and not with the city, even though they provide services to the city? So I think that's an important distinction that people need to know as well.
That's correct. It's due to grow as a hostile corporation and it's not only for the city of Lemon Grove, but it's tied into Zone One, which is Spring Valley, Lemon Grove, and Lemasa.
Correct. That's one of those little-known agencies of people who really aren't under the radar. So again, without ado, Lieutenant, you're up.
Sorry, I said go over there, that's easier for me. I've been sitting all day.
Are you okay if I turn these off? The audience can see or whatever.
Sure.
Please.
I promise I'll turn them back on when I get started. Is that better? Evening, Council, Lieutenant Pat McAvoy, Lemon Grove Substation Commander. I'm over the. So over the annual report for the Sheriff's Department for 2021. So just, we'll start with an overview and then I'll get into crime stats and then after crime stats, go into some of our special programs. Just an overview of the station, we're located right next to City Hall on thirty-two forty Main Street. Service area is three point nine nine square miles and over twenty-seven thousand people for our service population based on twenty-twenty census. Currently, this is the staffing levels for the contract that the Lemon Grove Substation has. It's myself, a patrol sergeant, a traffic sergeant, three traffic deputies, twelve patrol deputies, two detectives. Now on the professional staff side, I have my senior office assistant, two office assistants, a community service officer, that's a gentleman you'll see in the white car, the blue shirt riding around doing parking enforcement. I have a crime analyst and a crime prevention specialist. Of note, just the sworn stat, that's not all we have, but it's not just twelve deputies on that one. That's throughout the seven-day, twenty-four-hour period, that's the coverage we have. Overlapping coverage, so there's always a variety of deputies on. And then we also get backup from Rancho San Diego as needed. Additional investigative resources, these are for the Sheriff's Department. These are things that come with the contract, so anytime we get specialized U N L. On the previous slide, so there's two detectives assigned to the station. Those two detectives handle your normal crime reports, the burglaries, the identity thefts, and things that are just vandalism, things are handled at the station level. Specialized resources come with the contract from the Sheriff's Department. That's our homicide unit, child abuse, family protection, which would be elder abuse, and domestic violence unit, financial crimes, narcotics units. We have several narcotics units within the Sheriff's Department that all can help us out as needed. And a variety of task forces, auto theft, human trafficking, terrorism, fugitive. We use our criminal intelligence unit and our STAR unit as well, which is all any major injury accidents will come up with a scene reconstruction. Additional support resources the Sheriff's Department has, we have the ASTRI program, that's a helicopter up there. We have unmanned aerial surveillance vehicles, drones, if you would. Those are actually kind of rolling around Australia County and we'll deploy those as needed for a crime in progress. So if we have something where someone's running from us and we think we can find them with a drone and it's safer, we'll use it for that. We don't just arbitrarily fly the drone for surveillance, we're not Big Brother. It has to be case by case, when there's a crime or if we're looking for a missing person, it's right here for UAS. Also have a K-9, there's no K-9 deputies assigned to Lemon Grove Substation, but we do have four at Rancho San Diego Station, which is nearby. Anytime we need to use a K-9, we'll pull their dog as a resource. There are SWAT unit, search and rescue, and close to my heart, senior volunteer patrol. Like to recruit any chance I get, so with our senior volunteers, Pedro's in the crowd, one of them, thanks for coming, appreciate it. Currently at the Lemon Grove Substation, we have eleven senior volunteers assigned, which is pretty robust for a small station, some of the other stations have four or five. They're all members of the community, age fifty-five and older. And just some of the things they do, they'll do the YANA program, which just stands for You Are Not Alone. They'll do those checks on people that may be living alone, maybe have some medical issues where families just far away, so they'll come and check on them every day. During the pandemic, they weren't able to go house to house, but they're still making phone calls five days a week. We let our YANA people have the weekends off, but they're very busy with the YANA and we're always, you know, welcoming new people on the YANA program. So if anyone has a family member that's elderly or even a friend that's elderly that would stand a visit, they'll maybe have to help out with that. We also do vacation checks, you can sign up through those with the, on the Sheriff's website, just walk into the Sheriff's station at Lemon Grove, ask for a vacation check, you're out of town, they'll come drive by your house and make sure nothing's amiss. It is important to note that if you have someone coming to maintain a pool, feed your pets, stuff like that, let us know that schedule. So if the senior volunteers seize up a car in the driveway, they will call a deputy. And if we can't verify this, the deputies should start treating it like there might be crime in progress. Or get kicked indoors or anything like that, but it's just an exercise of eyes and ears out there. Our seniors also help with DUI checkpoints, they'll do traffic control. When we get a major accident, we need help shutting down roads. The seniors, they're awesome about coming out and helping and frees up a deputy sheriff from traffic control and go back to the patrol duties. Also do parking enforcement, specifically enforcing handicap violations and up some of our public parking lots. And they're a force multiplier, have Sheriff's Fleet maintenance on there. It's one of the things that makes them unsung heroes for us. Our cars get serviced in Curdy Mesa and all the way out by, in the Rancho San Diego area, and our senior volunteers, the ones that'll shuttle the patrol cars so that a deputy's not off the beat to drive and get their car serviced and have to wait three, four hours. They'll take care of everything for us, it's really nice having that. And then they always help us out with special events, you'll see them at the bonfire, National Battle, things such as that. Next slide. We have a crime review. So twenty-five-year crime review, we'll start with a broad paintbrush approach. You'll notice those spikes on the far left and the center, that's nineteen ninety-seven and two thousand and four, when we had some major crime spikes. The trend was a downward trend up until about twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, and it's on a gradual rise and kind of up, we're up from twenty-twenty, but we're down from twenty-nineteen. So it's kind of, we're kind of doing a zigzag on the saw right now with crime trends. We're kind of interested to see what trend, what trend contingent, are we going to go back down or should we go back up? So, I don't know, just the ball, we'll figure that out, right? So let's break it down to the last three years with the crimes. So overall, crimes increased nineteen percent in Lemon Grove. It's really not a surprise because we're seeing a nationwide crime trend with just everything going on. We've all, I mean, I don't need to educate anyone what's going on in the news, what everybody sees, but crime, crime is up, so I can't hide that and we're not trying to. The increases we've noticed were, and these, when I talk about crime trends, I'm talking about nationwide and talking about specifically in the city of Lemon Grove. Aggravated assault, burglary, vehicle thefts, and larceny. Those are our spikes right now that we're dealing with daily. I will say with larceny and thefts, if you look at the pie chart or the graph chart on the right, the dark blue on the left, that's twenty-nineteen, the light blue in the middle is two thousand, and the gray on the right is twenty-twenty-one. So we are, we're down from twenty-nineteen, but we're on the rise in all those categories. So larceny and theft, we'll kind of break it down. So you notice the last slide says all the crimes are up about nineteen percent, but total larceny and theft, and that's the overall picture, is actually down. But it's a, we lump a lot of things in that category. So vehicle thefts are up and up, some burglaries are up, but other things such as thefts from vehicles, identity theft, fraud, a lot of those are down and also rand theft. So some of the other theft things lumped in the larceny category are significantly down, which makes that, we're down forty percent. But overall, the trend looks up because shoplifting's up and things such as that. See those slides, you're like, wait, it contradicts itself. It really does, just the way we categorize crime with the NiPERS format. Of note, thirty-eight percent of all reported shoplifts in twenty-twenty-one were at Home Depot. That is the number one source for calls for service from the Sheriff's Department in the city of Lemon Grove. They have a very proactive loss prevention program and they work with our deputies, so we encourage them to call often. So not to say thefts aren't going everywhere else, they're just very proactive with it and they call us every time and we do everything we can to catch up. And with that, forty percent, forty-six percent of all shoplifts have resulted in arrests. We catch them, we catch a lot of them, which is significantly higher than most sheriff stations where response times a little bit further. We're very close to the Broadway corridor, so you can catch a lot of people and they tend to run right towards the trolley where the deputies are responding and snatch them up. Plus, just really well-trained loss prevention personnel that give us the information we need to identify and find these individuals. So vehicle theft, it does, there is an increase, eighteen percent more over twenty-twenty, and it does fluctuate throughout the year, so you see those spikes. Typically, we're probably going to see a spike coming up because we historically see it May, June, July, in the summer months, and then it drops again when school starts. Not to say it's kids doing it, but it just seems that, it just seems to be the trend is around that time. Could be college, could be whatever, I don't have the answer to that. And then again, it spikes again towards the end of October, November, and then goes back down. So we have two seasons where it spikes really high, then it drops, so. And some of the efforts we're doing to decrease vehicle theft is, we do have, we call them hotspot areas and that's where crime is being, vehicle thefts are being reported. So that's where we kind of saturate our patrol efforts there. We use the regional auto theft detectives to help us out, do some surveillance and try and identify offenders. And we also track offenders when they get released from jail and prison. If they have a high history of vehicle thefts, we'll try to take an active role monitoring those individuals and see if they're going to reoffend or hopefully, hopefully not, we pay attention to those individuals. And then we also work really close with Lemasa Police Department, Samuel PD Mid-City Division, Samuel PD Southeastern Division, as well as the Rancho San Diego Sheriff's Station to identify prolific offenders and trends. And our auto theft detective, it's a detective that's dedicated at Rancho San Diego Station that services both our city and the Spring Valley areas, so kind of helps him lump everything in instead of two independent detectives giving conflicting information. Think about burglaries, so burglaries have increased, up thirty-nine percent compared to twenty-twenty, with forty-five percent of them being residential burglaries and fifty-four are non-residential. Main reason for that is COVID. In twenty-twenty, everybody was home and people, if they worked, they stayed in the office, they weren't out and about, so we didn't get as many residential burglaries because for the most point, burglars don't like to break into occupied homes. They'd rather deal with no confrontation, which is some type of confrontation. So that, that explains the trend. Way down from twenty-seventeen, but again, we're on the rise right now. Calls for service for twenty-twenty-one, we responded to over twelve thousand calls for service. We are, per capita, the busiest station in the Sheriff's Department for our nine contract cities. And a total of thirteen sheriff stations, we get, per deputy, per capita, the highest calls for service. Makes me happy is that in addition to those twelve thousand plus calls for service, deputies also made over fifty-nine hundred deputy-initiated actions on top of that. So that's, that's when the deputies are being proactive, making traffic stops, contacting people that have been suspicious behavior, doing the extra patrols in the park and being visible in the public. So calls for service have only increased about one percent compared to twenty-twenty. And then on average, deputies responded to thirty-five calls for service and conduct about sixteen deputy-initiated activities per day, that's over a twenty-four-hour period. So arrests, full of eight hundred and thirteen arrests in twenty-twenty-one, which is up from seven hundred and five arrests in twenty-twenty. Of those arrests, I will say ninety-eight and a half percent of them were adult offenders, which I was putting out there, contrary to some of the opinion we've heard where it's kids out there committing the crime, only one and a half percent of our arrests in twenty-twenty-one were juveniles. The majority of our offenders we're arresting are adults out there committing crimes in our streets. But three hundred and thirty-eight were felony arrests, four hundred and sixty-three were misdemeanors for the adults. For the juveniles, only one was a felony and eleven were misdemeanor arrests. And comes to an average of about seventy arrests per month that are generated from our station. We get into our traffic unit. Our traffic unit consists of five positions right now. There's a sergeant that oversees the unit, three traffic enforcement deputies and accident investigators, and the community service officer falls under the traffic division. Their overall goal is to prevent traffic accidents and increase public safety and do public education. And twenty-twenty-one, traffic citations increased ninety-three percent compared to twenty-twenty. Also, traffic collisions increased forty-five percent, an increase of seventy-six. Again, that's a major contributing factor is COVID. Deputies in twenty-twenty were not, they're under directive to not make a lot of traffic enforcement stops to reduce exposure and unnecessary exposure, not only themselves, but citizens. So they're really doing traffic enforcement on gross offenders, people doing just blatant dangerous things. Whereas twenty-twenty-one, that enforcement's increased. Same with the collisions, we had more cars on the road in twenty-twenty-one versus a lockdown in twenty-twenty, so we see an increase in collisions. So the heat map I was talking about earlier for collision hotspots, and the biggest heat map, it was kind of like a thermal thing, is Broadway in Massachusetts is our main location where we have traffic accidents. And the next one is to the right of that would be Lemon Grove Avenue and Broadway. Those are the two major intersections where we have problems with traffic accidents. Not to negate everything else, if we did a pin map, there'd be pins all over our target reads. We like to use these heat maps so we know where to focus our traffic safety efforts. Here's some of the challenges we face, no surprise for a lot of it, is homelessness is a very real issue. We're not alone, every city throughout the state's dealing with homelessness. We can't fix it, we can't criminalize it. So we do get a lot of complaints about homelessness, but we simply just can't lock people up for being homeless. Sometimes it takes educating the public into that. And we, especially with COVID and the pandemic, they release fifty percent of the prison population, it causes a spike in our homeless population because we had unemployment at the same time we're having that. So a lot of that is a spike we'll see in homelessness. We're, I won't get into the weeds of policy and legislative issues we're dealing with, but there are a lot of steps to decriminalize drug use and drug possession and minimize it. So these are things that we deal with every day, substance abuse causes significant problems with us and a lot of times it's frustrating for the public, we understand that, when we arrest somebody for possession of meth or heroin or something like that and they get a citation versus four years ago, they're going to jail for that. But that is criminal justice reform occurring on our streets that we all see now. And then there's, and that kind of ties into public demand, the perception, a lot of times we get the perception, we call the deputy to come out for this, this person causing a problem, deputies talk to them, they walk away, didn't do anything. More than that, we've done something, we've gotten their information or we've even arrested them, but the arrest consists of a citation with a court date, four to five months down the road. So the perception is we didn't do anything and that's just, I mean, just the nature of the beast with some of the criminal justice challenges we're dealing with now. Here's some of the twenty-twenty-one initiatives we have, so to kind of recap, we have the Safe City Program, also called Safe Lemon Grove, that's the video federation sharing, those are the cameras we see at Berry Street Park, at Romanade, one at Broadway in Massachusetts, that are, they're not recorded, there's no audio, but it just allows us to direct link into them to monitor things. And it's also, we encourage the public to help us with the program by registering their cameras so that they can let us know if they have a camera in the system, so we have a crime, we can check our registry and they can upload videos. We don't monitor people's own security cameras, it's more just they, them letting us know they have a camera and they're willing to share footage if we get evidence of a crime. It's been a struggle to maintain consistent staffing, that's a regional issue throughout, well, it's not even regional, it's up in country, same thing with the fire department, we're having that issue. Fortunately, I am, I think we're fortunate because of contract city, we're bound by contract and we fill our station with, if we fully staff our station. Some of the other sheriff stations in the undercore areas aren't so fortunate as us, so call that a win for us. We have been doing an active homeless outreach, we're doing one to two of those a month. That's a partnership with Homestart, the city grant, and then Health and Human Services. We've been going out, the reason why we have law enforcement go out with them is not to, it's not an enforcement program, we're out there, out there to arrest homeless people and create more grief in anyone's life. The job there for the deputies is for the safety of the Homestart team and Health and Human Services. So the deputies will get complaints from the community, from council, from the city manager, where homeless encampments are, and that's where we're direct our Homestart efforts. Additionally, if the city gets complaints, they'll give the same, similar direction to Homestart. So the deputies don't necessarily always dictate where they go, they'll have a list of people that may need resources and they'll go out and offer those resources. It could be COVID vaccines, sometimes it's hotel vouchers, it's hygiene packs and things such as that. And we do offer housing assistance for those that are willing to take it. Some take us up on it, some would just rather have a hygiene pack keep going, but we really try to give them whatever resources and be there for them constantly. And ask, they're contacting the same people month after month after month with the hopes of, some of them will take it. If we get one off the street, it's a win for us. So the way that works is a deputy will initiate the contact and the only reason why is they're just going to gauge the level of the state of mind of the individual to make sure they're not having a psychotic episode or they're under the influence. And if they appear to the deputy and say, hey, look, we're here, do you want resources? They'll offer the resources, if they say yes, the deputy steps back, lets a Homestart crew come in and start working with the individuals. This year, we didn't really advertise it, but we made a partnership. Uh, this year, we didn't really advertise it, but, um, we made a partnership with Child Boy for Services, so we have a, uh, it's called DEC, Drug in Danger Children, it's a caseworker that actually works out of the Lemon Grove Station, and there, there, when we do a CPS referral for any, any type of incident where a deputy's in a house, and they see evidence of drug use or drug abuse, we'll notify our DEC worker, and they'll come out and, for one, make sure the welfare of the child is, is okay, and try and get resources to that family, and hopefully help them do, you know, whatever issues they're dealing with. And then lastly, one of the initiatives, the Traffic Enforcement Program, uh, also called the Motor Deputy Program, and I'll kinda get into the weeds on that, next slide. So what this Traffic Enforcement Program is, it's a pilot program that was started, the city manager, council for, uh, we started with, uh, is this just for data gathering? And the funding, we did one phase from March to June, the sheriff's department paid for overtime to have a motorcycle, a traffic enforcement deputy on a motorcycle, come out to the city, and hit our target areas where we're getting complaints, and, and do enforcement. In July, the council approved, uh, the funding of a part-time deputy sheriff. We had some hurdles with that, where the, the city of Lemon Grove funded half of a deputy, so it just comes about twenty hours a week, but we couldn't get any of the nearby neighboring contract cities to agree to fund the other half. Because ideally, we wanted to pay for a full-time deputy sheriff, two days in this city, two days in another city, working ten-hour shifts, we just weren't successful with, with our, with our partnering contract cities. So we, we covered that, uh, on just a, a part-time overtime issue, we tried to get a motorcycle deputy whenever possible, s, we were more successful at the beginning, but towards the end of the year, we're having issues, only because they were having staffing issues, because those motorcycle deputies are assigned to a contract city, and any city needs, for example, SNT wanted all their motors to, uh, really saturate certain areas in the city for their entire shifts, including days off on grants, so they weren't able to help us because their priority was their contract city. So what we did to alleviate that is, we couldn't get a motor deputy, we supplemented with a traffic enforcement deputy, there's dedicated traffic enforcement, uh, they did not handle any radio calls for service, they didn't do, uh, any crime reports or anything, they strictly did traffic enforcement, and it was based solely on community complaints, complaints to council, complaints to the city's office. So if I would get a complaint from a citizen at a particular intersection, say, next time we have a motor deputy program, or motor deputy working, I need, I need working enforcement in that area, and saturate that area. Next slide. So, here's what we got, just a, just an overview, this is where, like you know where, where the overtime money was spent, that the city paid, so this is from Ju, uh, August through this, uh, November. We didn't have anyone in July, we didn't have one in December doing this, so just for those, those few months. And, uh, we worked a total of sixteen shifts, uh, for a hundred and six and a half hours total, and during that whole collective period, there, they issued two hundred and twenty citations, o, over half, a hundred and forty-six moving violations, forty-two equipment violations, and thirty-two parking violations. But one of the traffic complaints we got was red curb parking, certain parking events is people blocking view, so we did parking, ramped up parking enforcement as part of that. In the map, you see the blue with the, uh, black in the middle, those are areas where citations were issued, it doesn't mean one in each, some of them are clustered in there, but that's, those are the areas, primarily, speed on Lemon Grove Avenue, speed on Skyline, and residential areas, where people were speeding, running stop signs, were, were real big focuses, really wanna get the residential areas and make it safer, get people to slow down. Next. Just kinda breakdown of those violations you saw on the, uh, map. You'll see, uh, let's get to the good stuff, forty-four red light violations, twelve signs violation, the three number thing, no U-turn, no right turn on red, whatever, forty-three speeding, and then forty-four stop signs. Those forty-four stop signs were all residential areas, where people are going through stop signs and not coming to a complete stop and, and creating kind of a public safety issue. Next. And then just additional violations, unlicensed driver, suspended license. It was great that one day, I don't know, it was the summer, we had a power outage, remember that, for a little bit? We had a deputy out doing this, this overtime detail, so he started, uh, hammering all the red lights that were flashing, and got seven offenders in about a forty-five minute period for not treating it like a stop sign. Just great, because it kinda stopped the issue. Eleven secondary viol, like, we don't stop people for no insurance, but if we stop them and they don't have insurance, it's an additional violation, so about five percent of people we stopped were uninsured motors, which is pretty high. Uh, I think we're all, there's a redundant entry, which is driver unlicense at the bottom, that's actually if they didn't have it in possession, and then the last one is a CN sign, that means case number sign, one of the stops resulted in a drug arrest, if someone had methamphetamine on them in plain view, but the deputy made the stop. Next. Then we also broke down, just to analyze it, and this is for your, so you can see where these offenders, and again, this is only for the Traffic Enforcement Program, this isn't all traffic citations we issued throughout the year, this is just specifically this pilot program. We, we tracked where people lived that were committing the violations in the city. Thirty-five percent live in San Diego, typically in the nearby zip codes and nineteen-one-one-four and, and the ones all around here. Twenty-nine percent were Lemon Grove residents, so a little bit less than a third, but significant portion of the offenders were, were citizens of Lemon Grove, a lot of Spring Valley, and then the rest were all other, and that's Charlotte County, Chula Vista, National City, couple people out of county, SNT, just kinda areas all around. I will say that we, we migrated this from Microsoft Excel into the pie chart, and it kinda, that's why glory, those are one percent, ones that look weird. Can't fix that. Next. Twenty twenty-two, what we're looking at right now is, uh, we're looking at a staffing increase for our PERC program, which is a psychological emergency response team. Uh, the PERC is a partnership with HHS Health and Human Services and other law enforcement agencies. There was a PERC clinician assigned to Lemon Grove Station for a good portion of twenty twenty, but, uh, she promoted, went on, and we couldn't, we, when I say we, the HHS has had a significant difficulty hiring qualified individuals to, to, to be our PERC clinicians, so in times where we didn't have a PERC clinician assigned to Lemon Grove, we relied on Ranch of San Diego Station, La Mesa PD, Alcohol PD, and those jurisdictions, so we had someone experiencing psychological emergency that wasn't criminal, we always try and get a clinician, granted, one's not always available, we work on it. We do have one that has, uh, is gonna start training with us, and gonna be assigned to Lemon Grove, and she should be operational with a deputy sheriff by the end of April. So, we, we had one come in in December, then, uh, uh, La Mesa stole her, just because they, they ran out of a clinician, and they kinda try and stagger the hours, so they have them close to twenty hours out of a twenty-four hour period, and, and they had, they had a need because they had less than us, and we, we have a lot of PERC clinicians at Ranch of San Diego and Imperial Beach, so we, we just relied on them, but, you know, deferred to La Mesa. Another initiative, you may have heard of, is a mobile crisis response team, and it's gonna hopefully start very soon in East County, they've been running it in North County and parts of South County, like National City, and what that is, is that is, in, in response to some of the demand for police reform, those people said, why are law enforcement officers going to psychological emergency calls when they're not psychologists, psychiatrists? So, the MCRT concept was created, these are individuals with, these are psychologists, psychiatrists, people with training specifically in mental, uh, mental illness problems, most of them are at least, have some type of master's degree or certification, similar to our PERC clinicians, and when people call, if they call nine-one-one, they're gonna give a deputy sheriff, I may add this to my mind, but there are resource lines also available for MCRT that we're trying to push out to the public, and we, and our communication centers trying to get better for non-emergency calls, referring them to MCRT, and instead of sending an armed deputy sheriff with a clinician out, we're sending, if it's not criminal, there's no threats of violence, there's no threats of suicide, there's, and they're not, uh, creating a hazard to other individuals, or just maybe having a bad day, MCRT is a more appropriate fix, so we're trying to get the right tool to the right job, and, uh, I will throw them down a little bit, because, uh, I blame them for our loss in some of our PERC clinicians, because they heavily regrade PERC, which, which is a wise move, because you have someone who's trained, has already been in the field, so they stole a lot of our PERC clinicians,[1628.83]